Adoption of some resolution on our budget for the year. Do we have anyone who cares to address the board before we get into the presentation prepared by the superintendent? This would be the appropriate time for public participation. Yes, Joe.
Hey, I'm just wondering, what are you doing here? You're saying one thing, then the next sentence you're saying another thing. Can you clarify that for me?
Which resolution?
Where is the Board of Representatives going to attend this? They're going to do no increase in taxes. And then the next sentence it says the index for just is 1.9%. So you're going to go ahead with the 1.9%?
There's two options there, Joe. One is the 1.9% if the Board wishes to do that. And the other one is the 5.45% with the exceptions to the health care and the pensions. And there's a deadline on that, so the Board needs to move on one or the other tonight so that we can meet the deadline by the end of this month.
Yeah. What you're asking, Joe, the first one says, if you read the end of it, it says no more than the index allows, and then it states that the index is 1.9%.
Yeah, I read that part, but I was wondering what you were up to. That's all.
Yeah, and that's what it is.
If that resolution is what passes tonight, there is no formal budget that's put into place. The formal budget wouldn't be put into place until May. It'll be made in a budget in June.
Let me ask one more question before we go any further. The 6% you got in the last raise, how much of that really actually went towards educating the kids in the classroom? For real academics, I'm not talking about --
Well, if you --
How much of that actually went for academics?
Academics is what percentage of our budget, and that would be appropriate, the amount? 58%.
58% of that last increase went for actually?
Education, though. The rest is for support costs.
Wait, but in support, support something else other than academic?
No, as in facilities and that type of maintenance and upkeep and heat and the normal operating cost of the district.
Okay, so 58% of the last increase went for academics. Is that correct?
It's 58% of the budget, so --
I want to know exactly because I want to look into it even more because I want to know where the money's going.
Well, look into it more. All right, thank you. Thanks, Joe.
We went for two exceptions last year, right?
Correct.
And one exception was for special education, and one exception was for pension. So, I don't remember what the percentage is, but we were about 2.1% was to the index, which would have went to your 58%. And then the other 4% went to special ed and pensions. And the pensions, because they keep raising them. So technically, that's what the money was spent on. But reality is, 58% of what we spent is on direct on education. So it depends on how you want to look at it, you know? You know, we can make it look any way you want.
Yeah, if it wasn't for the pensions, we wouldn't be in as bad a shape as we've been in the last several years.
Then why can't you fund them instead?
Pardon? But we have to fund them by law, sir, because the state approved these pensions back in the early 2000s.
So the state funded?
The state should fund it.
But can't they pay a tax?
I agree with you 100%, but the problem is they pass the buck back to the local school districts to collect the pensions from you people to pay for part of the pension.
Who's paying my pension?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know where your pension, where it comes from. But understandably, the problem, what is the percentage increase, Rose? What are we looking at right now?
Nobody has the test to afford it to enough to put an amp in.
Well, the state, the state needs the --
Then what does the state pay for?
Well, unfortunately, we pay the state taxes, too.
Yeah.
You're right.
Somewhere along the line, somebody's got to draw a line.
And we've been down this road multiple times, and again, for us to break the law doesn't make it right either.
People can't do it.
If somebody made a good point a few meetings ago, and it might have been somebody else on the Board, but the problem is if we don't pay our share to the pensions as the state requires us, when they give us our money at the beginning of July, they deduct it from it anyway.
But somewhere along the line, the state needs to --
So if we said, no, we're not doing it, well, then we're going to do it anyway, whether we like it or not, unfortunately.
The state needs to put a cap on the pensions.
The state needs to be disciplined, and that's where we all represent.
Somebody needs to say to the state.
But they all won again, as I said before, but I'm done.
And you're right, Roger. And, you know, we can get any of the politicians here when they're running.
Yeah, the same thing right here.
We hold multiple meetings, and we schedule meetings with the representatives, and they don't even show up or send anyone from their office. We can't get their ear unless they're running for office.
That's reminding everybody's attention.
They service you and move on.
And when they're invited, they don't come, which you'd think, because school budgets are in such a financial strait, that they would stop by our local representatives and take a walk into our building and see what our kids, what kind of an education they're getting, and see where the money's gone. But they don't know anything about what we do, and then they make decisions in Harrisburg. I'm done. Thanks.
I will mention that if we adopt either of these, it does not mean that there is tax increase if we do this tonight.
Correct.
This was pointed out last, at the last meeting. The way this reads, if you just read it, it looks like we're voting for a 5.4% tax increase or a 1.9% tax increase, and that's not so. This is a preliminary budget based on --
What we know today.
What we did last year, which doesn't have anything to do with what the state's going to get issued, we do not know. But the law says we have to either pass preliminary budget or pass a resolution saying we won't go above the index. It doesn't mean that there would be any tax increase with either one. The first one, number five, allows more flex, it allows the business manager more flexibility than the second one. So vote on this tonight is just following the law, saying, here's, you know, we're following the law. It doesn't mean that there has to be a 5.4 or a 1.9. There could be less, none. Roger.
Don't you think that voting on these tonight would give Rose an opportunity to have a false sense of security? So we get down to May, and all of a sudden, well, this is what we've been intending and intending. Don't you think that it would make everyone feel like they rode this wave out to May, and now they've no choice but to vote on that?
No, I don't. If I could answer, Bill, I'm sorry, if you could go ahead.
Go ahead.
I don't, because, Roger, we don't pad the budget. You know, we put in there what we feel is necessary. We don't put a lot of contingencies in, and there are times we should, especially if we have a big construction project going on. But we don't pad it with things that aren't practical or needed. And we do, and have in the past, cut the budget from the preliminary down to the final. So, you know, we're pretty careful with that. I'm not concerned that we have a false sense of security. I mean, it's a good point, and I could see it happening, but I don't think that's going to happen here. And again, we, I'm sorry, can I just finish my thought? Because I'm old, I'll lose it. But, and I mentioned this last time, I want to build on what Bill had mentioned down there, is that what we had on the agenda last month was a worst-case scenario. We're saying that this is what we're allowed, if we're allowed the exemptions, but we need a starting point to build. And we consider that a worst-case scenario, and then we would work it into the final budget. And I would not expect it to be on the high end of that.
Does your worst-case scenario do all programs?
Worst-case scenario would say that that's the budget, not making any program cuts, not changing the way that we refund any of the activities, all of those things. We know we're going to be changing that, and we did two years ago. We changed the way that we do extracurriculars, you know? So we've made changes, and this just gives us a worst-case scenario planning module so that then we can come back and say, this is what it looks like. Now we can say, you know, item 1A has got to go, whatever that item is, you know, we've got to make changes in the way we do that.
Just for clarification, you're saying that I'm not going to be here in May, and here, well, this is what we were figuring since January, and we're going to go.
Okay.
I just like to, I like to interject on that, because things are not going to get better. The funny formula is, we all know, the state of Pennsylvania isn't going to send us a balloon full of money to help fund our public school system here at Western Lane, okay? No matter if there's an extraction tax or not, we aren't going to be able to see an astronomical increase that is going to alleviate the burden from the taxpayers, okay? So this is why this meeting is so important in my eyes, is because last year was last year, and this year is this year, but the money isn't going to be there to make a whole lot of difference until we have to go to the taxpayers and say, this is what we're going to charge you this year. We have to raise the taxes because of the litany of reasons. So we can't look to the state and say, well, when Tom Hope's budget comes out on March 1st, you know, we might get a gift package, because guess what? That's not going to happen. So the way we're looking at it, and these figures that have been drawn up for you and that you're going to see here, they're not really going to change that much. Will there be a couple thousand dollars here, a couple thousand dollars there? Yeah, and I'm not saying that's not a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, in a 40.9 million dollar a year budget, or a proposed 42.7 million dollar a year budget, it's nothing. We aren't going to get millions of dollars from the state, and when we do get millions of dollars, we get it three years later. Or when we do medical services for the children, we don't get reimbursed by the state. So to look to the state and to say, okay, well, we're going to be all right, they're going to take care of us, it's not going to happen, okay? They're going to continue to come, they're going to continue to take from you, they're going to come and take from all the educators that are here tonight that live in the school district. They're going to continue to do that. Education is in a very tough spot. Like David and I discussed, how much does it cost to educate a child? We spend close to $14,000 per child in this district. I mean, the prices are astronomical. So when we say, right now in January, the numbers are just preliminary, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Well, let me tell you, we do know what's going to happen. They're not going to be any rosier, and things aren't going to get better. So the realistic thing to do is, is to take a look at this budget and make a decision on what we're going to do. How much are we going to burn in the taxpayer? Because I don't want to cut programming from the kids. I don't want to tax the people, you know? That's why we have to take a look at what's inside of our budget and where we can go. We had discussions. We put 3.7 million dollars a year into a debt service to pay off the debts that this district owes. And I asked Mr. Lindau, why can't we take some of that money and allocate it to protect programming, to restore music, to make sure sports don't get cut? But you know what the answer is? The tax raises because of the building, when it comes to the debt service, are specifically tied to that building project. When that building project and that bond end, so does that millage for the taxes. So we're hand-strung. So we take 2.1 now to offset and to help protect programming, guess what happens? It goes away eventually anyway, and the hole gets bigger. No matter which way you look at it, the hole gets bigger. The money has to come from somewhere. Where does it come from? It's not coming from the state, it's coming from the taxpayers.
What, what are the problems?
And I just want to finish, just want to finish. It's a completely broken and inept system. It really, truly is.
Thank you. I cut off Mr. Wolsmore. Mr. Wolsmore, did you have a comment?
No, when you elaborated, you addressed a lot of the questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald?
Okay. Getting back to Mr. Gudinski's statement, the fact is, is that we don't even know our funding from the state until at least July 1st, June 30th. And they've been late several times over the past six, seven years. So we're putting a budget together, not even realizing what the revenue was going to be, either plus or minus or the same. That's how difficult it is. In regards to the, to the, our budget deficit, in regards to our buildings and everything, we should be debt-free by 2021. Am I not right, Mrs. Emmett? Okay. When that time comes, my understanding is different than yours, A.J., only because that millage, when we pay our debt off, comes back to the district. And that money goes either into our, back into our general account, or we can give it back to the taxpayers. It's already in our budget. It's already our money, so when the bills are paid, that millage is in our budget. So that millage is still within us, and then we can, we have money to use to offset costs for education, or we can give a tax break back to the people, or we can do whatever we want, but we don't lose that.
Until we get that concrete, Mr. McDonald, like you just said, until we get that 110% assured by the state of Pennsylvania, I don't trust them to do that. I trust that hole to get bigger.
It's already in our budget. It's our --
What happens if that does happen? That's what I'm thinking.
But, you know, we're going to go back to the public because we have --
Yeah, that's fine.
We're going to have some lengthy discussions tonight.
Mr. Housher, may I ask you some other questions, just to follow up to Mr. Gudinski? I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm curious to know, in past years, from the preliminary to the tentative to the final budget, how much of a shift has there been at all? You know, in, say, the --
Well, last year was the first year since probably 2007 that we did a proposed preliminary budget in January. The previous years, from like 2008 through up to last year, we did a motion to, we did a resolution, stayed within the index. And staying within the index, there were years that they did go to the index, and there were a few that we went lower than the index. So I don't have exactly how much --
And there was one year that we amended it in August after approving it in June to drop it down. If I remember correctly.
I guess I was thinking in terms of the shift Mr. Gudinski was referring to, nothing new was going to happen, which we don't know for sure. He may be right, and he may be wrong.
It has practice, doesn't it?
By how much, by how much might it change, Rose? Has it done that in the past? Like, you look in January, what kind of funding we were going to receive from the state, and has it changed, say, you know, when they began to give us some figures?
Well, the years that we did the resolution, the budget, the actual budget presentation in the PDE form doesn't get repeated every day. So it's not, at that point, we did the resolution, stayed within the index, and we didn't do preliminary, proposed preliminary figures. That was, we didn't do the difference.
We had a question in the front row here.
Just a little confusion.
Right, I'm sorry.
Rick Thorpe. Last year, we were sitting here when the federal government did fund us, and you asked us for a tax increase, and you said by 2021 we'd be debt-free. When we asked that question, will our taxes go down? You were told, no, it'll be going into maintenance of those buildings. Now I'm hearing there's a possibility that we could get a refund. Where do we stand on that?
Ms. Emmett, could you answer that question in regards to once we're debt-free? The millage is already within your budget for this district. What can we do with that money? My understanding is, is that we can give, we can give a tax break back if we're financially sound, or we can use it within our budget wherever we'd like to. And could you answer that, Thorpe?
I mean, I have a thought for this, but from what I understand, and I think this is correct, that you do have a couple of options. It could be reduction in millage. It could be a set aside, you can, as a Board, decide to put X number of dollars into a capital improvement and capital reserve for future repairs. Like, I know we've talked about in the last two months and years, a roof on a high school, a need for that. So if we get to that point, we haven't replaced the roof by then, if you wanted to set aside X amount of that money towards repairing that roof and paying it off, rather than look at another loan to pay off the roof and doing it that way. Or it could be, I think it also could go into the general budget, because I'm not bothered to do it. But it is something that has to be decided by the Board at that point when we get to that.
By the Board at that time, yeah, sure. So we can reduce, or we can do a roof up here and not have to go back to the taxpayers to do the roof in 2021, why do you --
Well, last year, it was being said that we, there was probably no possibility we would see any reduction because we've already planned for maintenance on those buildings. So --
And again, that's six years away, and we don't know exactly what capital projects will come through before then, so.
And as for right now, with the exception of this roof over the high school and middle school, all of our buildings are up to par. Pretty good shape. Pretty good shape, thank you.
In the back corner?
At the last meeting, there was discussion about taking the budget line by line and looking at each and every item, so that everybody knew what was being spent. From my understanding, you can do that resolution again this year and claim, you don't have to give the budget yet, you can use the resolution according to 2028, is that correct, please? Or is there a need to re-put it? You do not have to give the budget tonight. We can say a resolution, and you can go through this budget line by line, going allow every citizen that wants to to see it on the website and see what everything is going for, so there's not so much confusion as to why we are where we are. Is that correct?
That sounds correct.
The resolution is, it's either that or the proposed preliminary budget. It's two different items. If the resolution is passed tonight, then there is not a proposed preliminary budget, the 2028 that you're referring to. That would not be four. That would not be, that would not be put together yet. I mean, I do have a proposal here.
Next year's one until February.
What, to do a line item?
Usually, line items to that detail would not be available until April or so, because this year especially, the Governor has until the end of March to do a proposed budget. Also, I don't have, like, we do a lot of, we're bidding with different items, like our fuel oil for the year. You know, we're in a consortium for our health care costs, so I don't have final numbers on those until April, May. Those are starting to come in. So to look at a line item line by line, you know, that's not something that is available now.
But you would have more time.
Yes.
You would have more time for everybody to sit down.
Yes, she just mentioned, like, up till April or so, that she's still working on this budget for her stuff.
I'm just wondering, is there a downside to us having more time? This is a lot of information that you have to look through, and you have to carefully consider. Why rush and make this happen when you do have the ability to have more time? To educate us, to give us information, to allow yourselves a huge volume of information we have to look through?
That is, it does have to be during the month of January. They do have to vote either, either of those resolutions that are on the agenda tonight.
What you're talking about is two tax increases, or --
No.
No. The one is, the one is the proposed preliminary budget, which would allow them to look at
going to the index of the 1.9 plus asking the state for two referendum exceptions, which would bring the tax increase up to the 5.4. The other is a resolution that you would pass, they would pass tonight, that would say they wouldn't go above the 1.9% index. They can go anywhere from 0 to 1.9, but there's nothing that says they have to do 1.9 or 0. It's not a decision that has to be made tonight. It's either that resolution that says 1.9 is the max they would do, or they pass the proposed preliminary budget that says they may look at doing exceptions above that 1.9. So those are the two options.
Are we still considering going line by line?
Oh, we will at some point, yes, but that's not part of it tonight, yes.
Right, not to see them. You are going to do that before any --
Oh, before a budget pass, yes.
So you do get more time for your, you know, this line?
Yeah, either way, we've got the time to do it. Joe, again?
You guys want to go ahead and plan your budget. Plan it with no increase, and plan on what you can cut. Then you have your budget put in, and then if you do get a windfall from the state, you can always go and increase your budget after the fact.
That will be one of the scenarios.
But that should be the main scenario, because all you're doing is turning all the burden over to the world, the only one that can't afford it.
All the scenarios that we present, as what Dr. Johnson says, well, when we start to look at the budget line by line, every scenario we present will assume worst case in terms of no tax increase.
Yeah, but you're going to try to take your budget on a tax increase right now?
No, no, no way out.
We're meeting the, go on, Dr. Thorpe.
We're meeting the, tonight we're meeting the letter of the law. All 500 school districts in the Commonwealth have to pass a proposed preliminary budget or a resolution to not go above the index.
Does the state pass the budget, too?
Yes.
Do they pass it?
They don't always pass it on time.
Well, then why should you be compelled to do what they're not doing?
Because we're not going to break the law.
Us breaking the law doesn't change --
It's not breaking the law.
Yes, it is.
You're conforming to what the state does.
It's part of the Pennsylvania school code.
We're not going to be penalized if we don't follow the law.
I'm sorry, we have a question right here?
Yes, I have a, a few people that are asking me, and I thought I should ask the Board to clarify the status of the pre-case program for next year. Is it going to be a pre-case, or is that going to be eliminated from the budget?
Okay, I'm sorry. Everything, everything that we can possibly look at, essentially that we do not have to do, is on the table for discussion.
I was just going back to the number this year, and it just zeroed out. That's why I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's either that or the other.
No, it's under the 1,100, if you look at that. It's just, it's just the way, the state's changed the accounting, they're charging pounds, so that's part of it. Everything, the pre-case numbers are under 1,100, if they're not over 1,800.
But legitimately, it's not something we have to provide. That is one of the programs that could be, right?
Yes, I understand that, and I was just wondering if it was, what's the plan?
Not at this point.
That's a good question.
Yeah, good question. Do we have anybody else? And we're going to have, Dr. Lucow has presented a presentation we're going to go through, and then the, you know, we'll have some discussion as to whether the resolution or the preliminary budget are acceptable. But I did want to address the public prior to that, so. Also, Kelly, I did receive your voicemail today, I appreciate it, and my investigation says it was properly advertised, and I appreciate your efforts there. So we're comfortable with the actions we're taking tonight. Thank you. Yes, one right here?
One question from Mr. Gudinski. Mr. Gudinski, he made, I, I had to take the quote, but he said that the system is broke, and I think that I can argue with that. But if you realize the system is broke, then what is the solution to fix it? Because I want to go back to what was just said before about us being penalized if you don't submit the budget in a proper and law-like form, which we penalize. Why isn't the state or federal government, when they, when they, when they delay giving us our money, why aren't, why aren't they penalized?
I mean, it's, as you've heard everyone say, it's the epitome and definition of the double standard. It really is. One thing that we can, I could cite right off the top of my head is Title I funding from the federal government. Federal government, in the last five or six years, the Board members who've been here, and everyone can attest, have been decimated. We've eliminated Title I reading from the R.D. Wilson School. We have it at our Evergreen Elementary School. Because you know why? The federal funding is gone. The federal funding that we depended on for all those years is now zero. It's dried up. So what we had to do is, the children got hurt. The children that needed it most of all got hurt. I take a personal interest, I will obviously say I don't speak for anyone on the Board, I just speak for myself. I take a personal interest in trying to do what's best for everyone when I make a decision. I put the taxpayer first, because I was elected by the taxpayer, okay? My parents were both teachers, but those are my parents, you know? That's not me. I support eliminating property taxes completely. That's my personal position, that would take this entire thing away, with a higher sales tax, an expanded sales tax, that every single person who makes a purchase does, and with a higher income tax. We wouldn't even have this conversation right now. My personal things that, you know, people see me write to the paper. That's why I write to the paper. I offer solutions to problems that are hurting and taxing our people out of their homes, okay? I'm not here, I'm not here to point the finger, but I'm here to try to give solutions, and that's all I can do personally.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Tony Rendell, REVA.
Thank you, Tony.
Tony, in regards to A.J.'s statement, eight or nine years ago, let's see, it's 2015 already, about 10 years ago, under the Rendell administration, they asked us for, what do school districts believe needs to be done to fix the financial woes? And their answer, our answer was, as Mr. Gudinski would be in Cairo, a sales increase of 7%. But you have to lock the government in, because they take your money like in Act 1, which was supposed to come to education, and they take the gambling revenue, and they give us a lousy $200 from year one, and it never got any higher. give us a lousy $200 from year one, and it never got any higher. They take the money and they do the walk-around money with it. But the bottom line was, we believed that a 1% sales tax was fair to everybody. If you can afford a Mercedes, you buy one, you pay the sales tax, and whatever. We sent those letters to every state representative, signed every board member's name on it at that time, and there's a lot of us that were there then, along, and we sent it to Harrisburg, Department of Education, to the governor's office, and everyone. It was a fallacy. Alls they wanted to do was, they were hoping they didn't get any remarks from any districts in regards to what would be a good idea. We were all for that sales tax. We thought it was fair. You know, you pay as you go then that way, as far as, as helping education.
And again, people traveling through Pennsylvania, whether they stop a quick mortgage or whatever, they're contributing to the support of the local community. And we were really pushing that hard. It would have been great for everybody, you know, and it just didn't happen. Pennsylvania is historically one of the worst for property taxes. I think everybody knows that. And until they shift that burden into the general community, you're not going to see a change. And unfortunately, we're at the wrong end of the food chain. That's the bottom line. And when they, when they delegate something for the local people to put that tax burden on their, their own community, I mean, that's as low as you can go. Roger?
Just one more clarification. The worst-case scenario in the budget, that includes, your definition of worst-case scenario is not cutting funds out of projects, right? Programming.
That's as is programming.
How does that worst-case scenario?
I suppose it depends on the perspective. Worst-case scenario, not cutting programming.
From a taxing perspective.
From a taxing perspective. In terms of increasing your taxes or any property owner's taxes, that's the worst-case scenario. You know, we want to do our very best to be physically responsible and at the same time maintain the integrity of what we think is a phenomenal school system. That's a really tough thing to do. You can't generate revenue.
Roger. We have a $1.2 million deficit to keep status quo right now. Okay, so that's worst-case scenario. That's for that 5.4, 5% is generated. To cover that, to cover that 1.2. If we were to build a resolution and vote for the index at 1.9, we're still $800,000 in the hole. Still. When you ask why, if we would do a line item, I guess we wouldn't have an option, would we? We'd have to come up and balance the budget with something, and that's going to be programmed. One of the things that, man, I don't know your name, but talked about was pre-K. Everything's on the table at that point. Programs are what would get cut. Salaries and benefits are being negotiated right now, but I don't see that making an impact on this budget. Potentially, but not on this budget.
I just, I just have a question. I had a preliminary discussion, the debt service and the amount of money we pay. And I'm, we're priding ourselves on being debt-free. And I believe the meeting you were at, sir, was the meeting when we were asked as a board, what would happen if we were to refinance that debt? Okay? Try to free up some assets and capital. And that's where my question came with, where are the tax millage actually bound to? Are they bound to the building of the school? Because if we were to refinance the debt, and we were to take some of the, say, $2 million of the 3.6, and to go ahead and try to preserve the programming, to restore the music, is that possible?
Oh, it's possible. And you know, that's why we had Mr. Bear here. You know, we had a session, sat down, looked at refinancing options. It wasn't recommended, but after July of this coming year, it may be an option that we have to pursue.
I think, I mean, I'm not trying to run their business, but I think that's something we have to look at right now.
If we do a wraparound and extend our debt, that is an option.
I mean, that $2 million is a lot of money. That can really pad the hurt on the taxpayers, as well as helping the programming and ensuring the education doesn't take a hit here at Western Lane. Whether it be the music, which I fought adamantly against, but we want to protect the education here. And I'm willing to put every option on the table to try to do so.
And in regards to that, I had an option last year, and it was because of conversation